Coming in, we purposely built a few minutes in at the beginning of our time together so that everyone could have a chance to look at the newly minted maps of the potential locations. And we're glad you're here. My name is Monica Murnean, and I work for a place called the Learning Tree Institute at Greenbush. We have been working closely with K-DAD's Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services to try to help get as much community input and stakeholder input in this process as we can, and will continue to work to support the advisory panel that was put together through an executive order by the governor. And so this evening is a very important moment in time in this very important process, and one that all of you obviously care about, to spend your time with us for about an hour and 45 minutes this evening to gather as much information that is currently available about the location, potential location, for a very important new, I would say, piece of infrastructure that supports the entire region, and that is the psychiatric state hospital. We have the evening designed so that you'll basically have three opportunities for community input. The way that our evening right now, if you would like to look at the QR code, you've probably seen the information that has been made available thus far from K-DAD's as well as Sedgwick County regarding what the preliminary plans look like, what work has been done thus far. But if you haven't seen that in social media or any of the local media, the QR code will get you there. That is also available, again, in the slides. The other thing that I would like for you to know this evening is there are several staff members around on the edges that will be helping gather questions and also are available if you have any specific needs that you have throughout the evening. Our format for this evening, I keep pointing it to the wrong location, and I think I'm messing with somebody who's also doing this for me. This is how we're going to lay out our evening here. We're going to have the nuts and bolts, the facts about the project thus far, from the two people who know it best, and that is Scott Bruner from K-DAD's. He's been working on this project from the beginning, and he will give an overview of the entire project, what it looks like. And then we'll have Tanya Cole from Sedgwick County talk about the bidding process and getting down to the potential locations for the facility. After you and while you are hearing that information, we have staff that are coming back and up and down with index cards and pencils. If you have questions that come up during the time, please write them down. We have somebody else that's going to kind of sort them out, and if we have duplicates, she'll get those all cleaned up for us. And then we'll move into a moderated Q and A. So I'll ask Scott or Tanya, depending on what type of question it is that you have, to answer the questions that are out there and that pop up while and after you hear the information. Following that, and once we get all the questions answered, we have the second opportunity for you to provide input, and that is through a survey. We're calling it the Best Fit Survey. As all of you, I'm sure, are aware, this is a complex process that involves lots of different moving parts and pieces. So one of the things that we're trying to gather from community members is best fit based on what you learned this evening. And you'll have the chance to either use a QR code, scan it on your phone, and take a quick survey, or we have paper surveys. At the time that you complete that survey, you are welcome to go home and put your slippers on and break into the hot chocolate, or you are welcome to stay, and staff will be available to answer any individual questions that you may have following the presentation. So three opportunities for input. We want to hear from you. We also want to provide you the most comprehensive bit of information that we have at this point. I want to share with you also that while this is a very important event, we have just completed, our team at Greenbush has just completed a process of surveying in Sedgwick County. And we were able to, we needed about 400 surveys to have an accurate reflection of the county. We ended up with a little over 800 that we could verify good surveys. And what we asked in that survey was, if you were to consider the placement of a hospital, what would you prefer it not be close to? Not be close to. And we presented information yesterday to the advisory panel that summarized that survey. And essentially, the big takeaways were things that, in general, folks wanted to stay away from, were areas where there were childcare, basically places where little kids are. And then there was also a clear delineation of types of locations that folks would be okay with, such as close to law enforcement, close to other healthcare providers, those kind of things. So that piece of information, the information we gathered this evening, will then be fed to the panel as well as the Sedgwick County Commission as they move forward with their decision. So there's a little bit of background, and I will turn this over to Scott Bruner from K-DAD's, who will provide a really great explanation of the process thus far.
Thanks, Monica, for that introduction. I don't know if this will be really great or not. I guess we'll see how we proceed through. My name's Scott Bruner. I'm the Deputy Secretary for the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services. My role is primarily working with our four state hospitals, two that serve people with mental illness, and two that serve individuals and families for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities across the state. And it's been my real pleasure to get to work on this particular project, to really change fundamentally the service system for adults with mental illness by adding a new state psychiatric hospital here in south central Kansas. It's an exciting project because of the number of partners that we've got. The involvement with the county has been really important as well, and we'll talk more about that. But it's really an exciting project to work on, and I'm happy to be a part of it. My job is to give you some background about the project, the types of patients that are going to be served, what we've done so far in terms of design of the building, and then some of the governance around the project as well and funding. So I'm just going to walk through that. There is, as we go through the presentation, there'll be a couple of opportunities where there are links to internet sites that have some background information, a one-page document that, or front and back document that we wrote to kind of describe the project. We've got that on the K-DAD's website, it's on the county's website, and it's also on Greenbush's website. So we've got lots of places where the public can interact and get that information. And if you're really desperate and need something to do, there's a short video that I recorded talking about the project as well, which my mother's seen, so there's one person who's viewed it, and I think that's about it so far. And before I jump into the overall project, I want to thank all the members of the public that have come here tonight. There's lots of folks, representatives from the Kansas Legislature as well, and the County Commission appreciate their participation as well. So this is a regional state psychiatric hospital that we're looking to build. Jumped ahead, oh, patient profile. So I'm going to read it off there because I'm one slide ahead. So it's a hospital primarily for adults. To be admitted as a patient to this hospital, you have to be an adult who's in a mental health crisis, and you're ordered by a court to receive care and treatment. In other terms, in our other hospitals at Osawatomie and Larned, we call this an involuntary placement. So a court's decided that a person's at risk to themselves or others at a severe enough level of, with severe enough mental illness that they need to be involuntarily committed to care or treatment. The other kind of patient that we're going to serve are people who are ordered by a court to a state hospital to have their competency to stand trial evaluated or undergo treatment to have their competency restored. Those are two different purposes, but those are the two types of patients that we serve at our hospitals at Osawatomie and Larned today. The way we've designed this project, there'd be 25 beds for the acute inpatient care, and we think with 25 beds, we'd serve approximately 150 patients per year for that involuntary care and treatment type case. And with 25 beds for competency evaluation, we'd expect to serve about 100 people a year in those beds, both either as evaluating their competency to stand trial or restoring them to competency. They're a little different in terms of the number because of the length of time it takes to provide that treatment. It comes up from time to time of why is this building being considered for Sedgwick County? And I think there are a couple of important reasons. One is that as the state of Kansas, with Governor Kelly, has invested a significant amount of state funds in trying to have a regional, building up the regional state mental health hospital system across the state. We've invested a great deal of money in community mental health centers, regional crisis capacity, and having regional state hospitals at a very high level of acute inpatient treatment makes sense as well, to provide services as close to where people live. Everybody that we serve in a state hospital is going to return to their community of choice, so it does make a lot of sense to place those services as close to where people live, so there are fewer disruptions to where they live, where they work, their family interactions, those kinds of things. So it makes sense to have a regional capacity. Right now, the state hospitals in Larned and Osawatomie are the only locations that provide involuntary treatment for adults, which is great if you're on the eastern side of the state or in the not-quite-southwestern side where Larned is, but to get every other county served and every other community served, there's quite a travel time to do that. So having an additional hospital will kind of divide the state up more evenly. There's a lot of community providers here, particularly in Sedgwick County, Comcare, Ascension Via Christi, lots of other community providers, and they deliver really important services to adults and children in mental health crisis. Where this hospital will serve that additional role is to serve those patients who are in the most severe crisis and are decided by a court that they need to have that care and treatment in an involuntary setting. That's a level of care that most communities don't already have, so it complements the system that's already in place. And then, I guess, fourth, a primary reason is we've got a very long backlog to serve criminal defendants who are waiting for competency evaluation or treatment at Larned or at Osawatomie. And there's some information here on the slide that's a little bit old, but the trend is the same. Last January, there were 29 inmates in the Sedgwick County jail who had waited for an average of 130 days for treatment at Larned, and the longest time they waited was 329 days. Our average right now for November was right around 400 days to have people wait to get into Larned for that competency evaluation or treatment. That means those defendants are waiting in jails, they're acutely mentally ill, and the jail has to deal with those mental health symptoms. It also means that for those defendants, their criminal process isn't proceeding. They're not able to get to a trial to have their case decided. So adding capacity in the state for forensic competency cases will do a lot, we think, to move, advance those cases and reduce those backlogs. And then last of all, this is the right county to build this hospital because of the population base. At our hospitals at Larned and Osawatomie, again, are great for those communities, but there are very limited number of people to hire when we have jobs available, and we have lots of jobs available at both campuses. So we think building a hospital in a community that's got training opportunities and an able workforce and healthcare workforce will help us provide all those services in a more effective way. In terms of funding the project, the governor included this in her 2023 budget. The legislature endorsed that recommendation as well and has added on to that over the last couple of years. Sedgwick County applied for and received $25 million in federal recovery funds for the construction costs. K-DAD's has another $15 million in each of the two budget years for ongoing operations and construction. So we're looking at about a $40 million to $55 million project. We've got an agreement with Sedgwick County to describe the project phases and how the funding can be used to buy property, which is the phase we're at now, design the facility, and eventually a lead to construction. And we're working, that agreement has done a really good job of keeping the funding straight and the phases of the project straight. And the phase where we're at right now is that Sedgwick County put out their request for proposal for property or buildings. We're working also on a request for proposal for an architectural firm, which is underway right now as well. When those two contracts are awarded, the county will work to actually start construction, get the building constructed. Once it's substantially complete, we'll transfer operations and ownership of the building to the state of Kansas, and then K-DAD's will operate it as a state psychiatric hospital at that point. So the county's role, once construction is substantially complete, will be complete, and we'll take it over as a state hospital. We did some initial design work over the summer, late fall and summer, on kind of the programmatic design, what would we need if we're building 50 beds? What would that need to look like in terms of providing the level of service and support? One of the legislature's recommendations and through this project was to use the funding that we've got to definitely build the 50 beds and design the project at that level, but to think about what it would look like if the building was expanded to 100 beds. And so the design work that we did took both of those elements into account, and we designed or worked on a design for a building that would have all of the support spaces necessary to support 100 beds, and then kind of a modular or stepwise approach to add beds to go from 50 to 100. And so the image that's on the screen is the result of that design process is just kind of one concept of what the building might look like. That's kind of from the front elevation to meet all the needs that we have for both a forensic competency treatment space and also for treatment space for people who are involuntarily committed. That's another image kind of from the roof, looking towards the front of the building, and probably the part to internalize there is the living units that are kind of spread out from the central core of the building. Each of those is a patient wing, and that represents two 25-bed wings. If we were going to go to 100 beds, there'd be two more pods like that on either end of the building. In terms of dates for the project, this goes back to March 2023 when we signed the agreement with Sedgwick County. We're at this phase in December now where we're looking at awarding the construction contract and the purchase of the property. Once that's done, we'll start and get the architectural engineering contract awarded. I will work with that architectural firm to work on the design. That's kind of most of the first part of 2024, develop into the construction documents and award a contract to a construction contractor late in the year of 2024, and then start construction either late in 2024 or early 2025. The timeline here would project about an 18-month window of construction before we could open the building in 2027. It could go faster than that, but this is kind of a timeline that reflects when we have to get the money spent, because our money's involved in that as well. And then the last comment that I wanted to make was about the advisory panel that Monica mentioned. So because of the nature of this project, the governance is complicated, the funding's kind of complicated. It does involve lots of interests around the service system and how that will work together and integrating things here in south central Kansas. The governor appointed an advisory panel through an executive order to help us with the project, to provide advice and recommendations. The panel specifically charged in the executive order with gathering public input on the needs and location of the state psychiatric hospital, how it would fit into the existing service system within Sedgwick County, and then researching existing resources, gaps in services, and barriers to improve care and delivery of services in Sedgwick County. There's a few specific charges in terms of recommendations the panel is supposed to make on workforce development needs, the operating model of whether everybody that works there is a state employee, or there's some combination of state employees and contractors, and then any statutory changes that are needed to operate the hospital. We meet every month. According to the executive order, we meet every month. We meet every month in Sedgwick County. We've met three times, or three times now, and working a lot towards this part of the project of getting the property identified and the design. All the 14 members are appointed. There's legislators, there's folks from the Sedgwick County staff, law enforcement, mental health, business stakeholders. It's been a really great group of folks to work with. They've asked really important questions about the project and provided really meaningful input so far, and I'm excited about the next year as we go into the design and get past this stage and really dig into how do we staff a hospital like this? What kind of workforce development efforts do we need to make? How do we make sure it integrates with other services in the county and really build this as a value add to Sedgwick County and the service providers in the area? And then last, just in terms of where you can find more information, we've got the links to the K-DAD's website where this information is and the Sedgwick County website as well. A lot of the same information, we've tried to duplicate in both places. Again, it's kind of a no wrong door. I would say that Sedgwick County's done just a tremendously good job of posting information about compliance with the Federal Recovery Act, which the $25 million for this project is Recovery Act money, and there's timelines assigned to that, oversight elements assigned to that that are a little bit different and more onerous. So that's a really great place to look, to dig into those aspects of the project, which are really kind of guiding a lot of the timeline and other parts of governance of the project. That's my high-level summary. Again, please, if you need note cards to write down questions that you would like to ask, please do that. And now I'll turn it over to Tanya Cole to talk about properties.
Okay, well, good evening. I am Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager for Sedgwick County. And what I'm going to go over this evening is, I'm going to go a little bit deeper into our space planning. We'll talk about our RFP process, and then I will get into the shortlisted properties. Okay, as Scott mentioned, we worked with an architectural firm this summer, and we did a space needs study, and they provided us with three options. And the first option is looking at our 50-patient count for the mental health hospital. And that includes two acute patient units and two forensic patient units. And Scott talked a little bit about the difference in those patients. That total square footage need is 70,618 square feet. For option two, that is, again, 50-patient count, and again, two acute patient units and two forensic units. That total square footage need is 76,231. The difference between option one and option two is, what that gives us is support space for unit bed expansion. So what that means is, if we were to go with option two, what that gives us is 50 beds, but it gives us the support space if we were to expand to 100 beds. So later on, if we were to add on 50 beds, we have everything we need in that support space, and we wouldn't have to go back later and add any mechanical units, any additional kitchen space, any type of conference rooms. All of that is already built in in that option two. All we're having to do in option two is to add on that 50 additional beds. Option three, then, is the 104-patient count, and it gives us four acute units and four forensic units. So the square footage need there in total is just a little over 111,000 square feet. So in total, what we looked at was really options two and three, because we knew and we understood that although we were looking at 50-patient count, we knew that we were eventually going to expand to 100. So we cut out option one, and we were looking at option two and three. So that is the square footage need of 76,000 to 111,000 square feet. We also knew that if we were looking at acres, if we were going to look at vacant land and a new build, the acres that we needed was seven to 11 acres. And I want to explain that variation. What we really wanted was nine to 11. What we didn't know was what we're going to get for vacant space. And so if we needed to, we could double stack the units, the patient units, and if we did that, we could reduce that acres down to seven. And so that's why you see that variation of seven to 11 on the acre need there. Okay, this, I know this is really small, and I'm going to try and explain this as best as I can. This is our schematic design that was designed by the architectural firm. And so what you see at the top there, that is the lobby waiting area, and then if you come down a little bit, that's our intake and triage and screening area. What I want you to focus on is kind of that middle part, the brown and the light brown area. That is the facility's support area, and that's where I'm really talking about is what we're trying to build into if we have the 50 beds and what we wouldn't have to go back in and build later if we're adding for the future. And so in that space is kitchen, it's mechanical space, it's equipment storage, it's pharmacy, it's linen. If you look down a little bit further in kind of that light, I'm going to call it kind of a yellow area, that is administration. And so that's where you're adding your staff, your medical records, your therapist offices, your nurse offices, your psychiatrist offices, your clinical director, HR director, activity therapists, for example. On the left there, still in the kind of the light area, those are your treatment team workrooms. Those are your wellness rooms, your staff lounge and your break room, your conference rooms. What I'm trying to show you there in that space is, again, that is the support and infrastructure space that we would build in, in that 76,000 square feet that we would not have to build in later if we are coming in later to add the additional beds for the 100 beds. Okay? And then in these spokes down here, this is, and go back to where Scott showed you the renderings, this is where your patient units are. And so, you know, in the shorter area, that would be where you would have six patients, for example, and then in your longer area, you would have eight patients in that area. And then if you focus here on the left and the right, those would be where we would have future patient beds. And so, again, the idea here is, what we're trying to build now is for the 50 beds. On your left and your right is where you would build if you come in later and you build future bed space. Okay, let me move on to the RFP that we put out for buildings and land. We put this out October 25th, and we did this through our on-call real estate broker, Reese Nichols. We also advertised, our purchasing department put out the RFP as well, and we also posted on our website. Our request to be returned in was November 30th, so our deadline was November 30th, and we had two options. One was land, and one was building. What we asked for on land was that it be within the limits of Sedgwick County, that utilities be in close proximity, that the land be close to highway access, land is to be seven to 11 acres, and that it must be able to be changed to appropriate zoning. For the option for building, again, building was to be within the limits of Sedgwick County. It was to be move-in-ready or be able to be remodeled. Building was to have close highway access. Building was to be 75,000 minimum to 112,000 square feet plus. The plus there was, we know that we couldn't have a building that stopped exactly at 112,000, so we added that plus there to say that if it's over 112,000, that was still okay. And then it must be able to be changed to appropriate zoning. And so I know that our on-call real estate broker mentioned that that went out to over 2,000 real estate brokers within our area. Okay, so what we received back for building and land RFP responses, we received three responses on our buildings RFP, and one property was shortlisted. We received 11 responses on land, and three properties were shortlisted. And so let me just go through how those buildings and land were scored and how they were shortlisted. They were based, it was based on a scoring mechanism, and I'm going to go through this for land, and I'll go through it for buildings. And if you can see that up there, hopefully, you'll see that there are some similarities between land and buildings. So on component A for both land and building, there was the ability to meet or exceed all requests for proposal conditions and instructions as outlined herein. Herein meant the RFP. So that was 20 points for land and 12.5 for building. Herein meant the RFP. So that was 20 points for land and 12.5 for building. And these were graded separately. So land was graded separately, and buildings were graded separately. I'm just saying this at the same time, so I don't have to go all through land and all through building, because it's the same criteria. So component B, capacity to deliver the property in the required time. Same for building, 20 points on land and 12.5 on building. For land, proximity to highway, road access and utilities, that was 20 points on land. And if you had a building, it was 12.5. Compatibility with neighboring area, that was 20 points on land. And if you had a building, it was 12.5. And then for E, market analysis comparing current listings to recently sold listings of similar criteria, 20 points. And then you'll see that is the same criteria on building. Component H, that was 12.5. What buildings had that land did not have are three additional components. Ease of access throughout the facility, single-story or multi-story, that was 12.5 points. Age of existing infrastructure and condition of building, 12.5 points. And floor plan alignment, 12.5 points. So you'll see that land submittals had a total of 100 points, and then building submittals also had a total of 100 points. That was the evaluation criteria for land submittals and building submittals. Okay, so for building, again, just to repeat, three submissions on buildings, one property shortlisted. The one shortlisted building is 2622 West Central and 723 North McLean Boulevard. This is in Wichita, Kansas. To speak to the hospital, I'm sure that a lot of you are familiar with this, formerly known as Riverside Hospital. 170,313 square feet on the hospital, and that was built in 1966. And I don't, I don't think I have a, I don't know if I have a pointer. And then there is an office building. Scott, I don't know if you can point to that over there in the corner. Is there a pointer?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Right in here. That is 10,102 square feet, and that was built in 1995. Also included on this parcel is 1.2 acres of land, right in this area. And then in whole here in this entire area is 489 parking spaces. Okay, and then on land, 11 submissions were received, and three properties were shortlisted. The three properties are 53rd and Greenwich for 12.93 acres, 85th and I-35, excuse me, 135, total of seven to 11 acres there, and MacArthur and Meridian, seven to 11 acres on that property. So first one is 53rd and Greenwich. There is not an exact address on this, so it's titled Sunflower Commerce Park Lot 8, Block C. And again, 12.93 acres here. There are utilities available, and this is in Bel Air, Kansas. Okay, next property. This is at 85th and I-135. Utilities are available. This is in Park City. So what you're seeing here is a total of 63 acres. And so, again, we are only looking for seven to 11 acres for the mental health hospital. And then I just might mention here, down here is, this is Nayar or formerly Kansas Coliseum. Okay, and then the last parcel is at MacArthur and Meridian, I would say just west of that corner there. There's availability here at this, I'm going to say it's northwest corner. There are utilities available at this location. And hopefully you all were able to see these maps up close when you came in. Okay, so for next steps, right now, I would say we're in kind of the listening and engagement process. It's important that, and thank you all for being here tonight. It's important that we hear from you. We also are listening to, as Scott mentioned, the Governor's South Central Regional Hospital Advisory Panel. And then part of our due diligence is to take a deep dive into these four properties, and take all those factors into consideration into the next evaluation criteria. And this is the next phase of the evaluation, and it's to look into these components, which is the overall cost with purchasing property and estimated construction. That will receive a total points of 50. And then the best solution for community staffing and patient needs, and that will take a total of 50 points, again, for a total of 100 points. So this is the phase two of these, that we'll look into for these shortlisted properties. And so that's all I have, and I think I hand it over to Monica.
Thanks to both of you. So just a quick reminder, if you have a question, would you please write it down? And there's folks walking up and down that are happy to take those. We have a few so far. Thanks for that. There's Dawn and Jen are out there if you need a pencil. And then at the end, you will have the opportunity to express your opinion and give your input on what you think is the best fit through a survey that you can either do on paper or on your phone. Also included in that survey is an opportunity for you to have comments, and then also an opportunity, if you'd like to continue to be part of in the engagement process as the panel continues to do their important work. Okay? So we have a few questions here. I think this might, could be either one of you. What are the pros and cons of a new building versus renovation?
So, well, a new building, you get to build not quite whatever you want, but you get to have some more flexibility to incorporate newer technology, energy efficiency, for the kinds of patients that we serve and the staff that work there. Safety's extremely important, so you can build the facility so there aren't places for people, we call ligature resistant, so there aren't attachment points where people could injure themselves. The staff can be safe, so there's some real advantages to having a blank slate to start from. There's a lot of building that's going on in psychiatric hospitals, a lot of best practices that could be adopted. Renovating an existing building, there could be some cost benefits in terms of structure and infrastructure, you know, you may not have to buy a new boiler or chillers, condensers, and things like that that may already be on the site that are usable. But, so, ask for pros and cons. So I think I did some of each for both options. But we, one of the other perspectives, I guess, we have from the state level is, we've got two hospitals, the Hospital of Swatomi and Atlarnid were built, our newest building was built in the early 90s. So we spend a lot of state money maintaining roofing, bringing those kind of buildings up to modern standards where we can. And that's important money to spend to keep the facilities functioning and serviceable, but it also is something we wouldn't have to do right away if we had brand-new construction.
Tanya, you got anything different to add to that?
No.
Okay. All right. The next question is, where can I see the data from the survey? The data from the survey will be posted on all the three websites that Scott listed, Greenbush, Keadads, and Sedgwick County tomorrow morning. They'll be part of the advisory panel presentation. And also, I want to offer to anybody, that the people that are taking information, if you would like to have a personal call or personal follow-up with any piece or part of the information that are gathered tonight, please just provide us your email address or cellphone number, and we'll get that to you. The next question, the facility is likely not large enough. Will you build additional facilities?
I think at 100 beds, we've had a pretty active discussion with the panel and others about the size. 50 is what Sedgwick County had talked about originally. It's what we proposed at the state level. 100 beds would provide some real opportunities to make progress on the wait times for competency. So I guess I don't think that it's not enough. There's some work that was done a few years ago at the Mental Task Force to try to assess how many inpatient beds does the state need. And at that time, we were something on the order of 200 to 350 short. So this doesn't get us quite to that number. But there are other things going on as well in terms of mobile crisis intervention at the county level and community level, other kinds of interventions that we've tried. So it's a really good question. I do think 100 is a significant investment of resources to get built, a significant leap in capacity for the state, and is a reasonable place to start. I don't know that we have another regional site in mind for the same kind of project. This was kind of a good fit of interest by the county and interest in a regional approach from the state. I suppose we'd have other, we could have other conversations with other communities, but this does seem to fit, a lot of things aligned to get us to this point that we wouldn't want to not take advantage of.
Thanks. This might be Tanya. When will the final site be decided, and how will the public be notified?
I think we're working on, as I mentioned, the next steps are to take in this information that we're hearing from the public tonight. We're going to do the deep dive on these properties, and then also hear from the panel, the Governor's panel. And then we will work on that next step, which was the evaluation criteria. And so our hope is to, hopefully by the end of this month, be able to make a recommendation to the County Commission. And the public should be made aware, I would say by January, sometime in January, on the selection of the property.
And this is kind of a follow-up. We have two questions that are related to, what other times and opportunities could people provide their input regarding the final decision? Would you encourage through their County Commissioner, or what other mechanisms would you encourage, other than the ones we're providing this evening?
I think they can certainly reach out to the County Commission if they want to weigh in on any of the locations. I don't know if you want to continue the survey longer than tonight to, you know, weigh in on any of those locations. I don't know if that's a possibility as well. That might be one avenue to consider as well.
So at this point in time, we wanted to collect from the folks that had heard the provided information. So this particular survey will close this evening, but there is another opportunity for that to reopen and to get more information out. The other thing that I'd like to point out is that through the information that is available online and everything we've sent out through social media, there's an opportunity to send in questions and comments through a generic email address as well as a phone number. And we have been receiving questions and comments and thoughts all throughout this process. So we hope that that is working as well. I have a question about the federal funds. With the federal government recovery funding, what constraints or barriers does that impose? For example, schedule?
Well, I would say it's very restrictive. We are trying to work through a very tight timeline that we can design and construct a building and have that completed by the end of 2026. And to be able to accomplish that is why we're working so hard and so quickly to basically acquire either a building or land and design and construct. And so we have to have the contracts in place by the end of 2024, and we have to have either a building remodeled or a building constructed by the end of 2026. So we're under a very tight timeline to be able to do this project. But that is the way that you will see with a lot of these projects that are working with these federal funds. That's where we're at, and that's where you see where all these other projects are with that type of funding.
So this is, I believe, a Tanya question. Can we see the other properties not shortlisted? Can we see the prices of all the properties? Is that publicly available?
I'm sorry, that can't be disclosed.
Say it again?
It cannot be disclosed.
Okay. This is a Scott question about staffing. What are the staffing plans to address the new facility when we already are experiencing unfilled roles?
It's a great question. So part of what we'll spend the next year working on is how we would, not just the number of staff that we need, and it's somewhere between 225 and 270 nurses, direct care techs, psychiatrists, psychologists, other kinds of folks. But we need to work with our community partners, education partners, to figure out how to increase the supply of all those kinds of providers, social workers, nurses, psychiatric-trained folks in Sedgwick County and other parts of the state. So it's a need that we have, Comcare has, other service providers. So we have to, what we've talked a lot about is, we can't just take staff from existing places and just reallocate them. We've got to grow the whole pie. We've got to expand the number of people. So because that takes a while to train people, it takes a while to get them educated and interested in the field. That's where we've got to really start 2024, and figure out whether that's, you know, loan repayment options, apprenticeship options, and then just working with Wichita State, the osteopathy school here in Wichita, community colleges, all those kind of options to figure out, how do we increase the supply? And it's got to be for the whole, the whole community and the whole state.
And this question, I think, is also on your mind on the same topic. How are we looking at the future workforce, knowing that, you know, this is quite a bit down the line, and it's a big issue for everybody?
Yeah, if we had more time. But really, what we're experiencing, I think it's across healthcare in general, but in mental health in particular, just a lack of interest in the field. These are, they're really difficult jobs. There's a lot of reward to it in serving people with mental illness that are very acute, and seeing the progress they can make. But it's, it can be dangerous. It can be frustrating. So, and it's not the, you know, television-worthy ER department kind of medical drama. So we've got to get people interested. We've got to open up the doors and let people see the work that we do, and interest high school students, people in community colleges that want to take this on as a profession. Because it can be, it's, working with the legislature over the last couple of years, we've made a lot of progress on wages for our direct care staff and nursing staff. On the state hospital side, it's extremely competitive. It's just the obstacle of the being proud to say you work in a state psychiatric hospital is a, we've got a challenge that we have to overcome there as well. So lots of work to, you know, advertise what we're doing. I think building, this project in particular, building it new gives us a good place for people to experience what the environment can be like, create some training opportunities with the Biosciences Campus and others. So again, it's a good alignment of location and timing to really make a significant change.
So this one is definitely a Tanya question. Will the design partner be able to help assess, I think it's access, the site before final location decisions? I'm going to say that again. Will the design partner be able to help access the site before final location decisions?
I'm just thinking through-
That's the best I got.
Yeah, I'm just thinking through the timing. That's, there's a high possibility of that, yes.
So- So again, remember your third opportunity for input is these folks will be sticking around as well as our staff and if you have any additional questions or want any specific follow-up. What happens if we miss scheduling deadlines? If we don't get what we need to done with the federal funds?
Well, that's a good question, but I can tell you that I'm pushing these deadlines so hard that I, it's not a possibility in my book. So I don't know that that really answers that question. But this, it is an extremely, we are in extremely aggressive timeline and I, that's why I keep pushing so hard on everything that we're doing. And so I'm highly confident that I think we'll make the timelines.
Fair question.
Monica, maybe the other, so because the concept here is this would be a state hospital, if the federal funds, and we're actually the grantee to Sedgwick County, K-Dads is the grantee. So if for some reason those wouldn't be used in time or they are repurposed in other direction because of that, I think we, it would then come back to the state, to the governor and the legislature. Sorry, I should start with K-Dads, with my agency, the governor, the legislature to figure out how do we fund the project wherever it is in the, in the, in the planning phases or construction at that, that point.
Do we have data from other states regarding escapes?
Well, we're not, we don't call them escapes. We call them elopement, but they do happen. They happen in other states. They happen in Kansas at our existing hospitals. The, the numbers aren't, aren't huge, but at least in Kansas. But, so I don't know what other states' experience would be, but ours is three to four a year that are, that are folks that, that walk off campus for an amount of time that would be more than nominal.
So do you want to address it all, that maybe some existing security protocols that would be automatically put into play in, in this facility, maybe like in your other facilities?
Sure.
Specific to concerns around, you know, neighborhoods and proximity?
Well, probably a couple of things that are, that would be relevant. So at Larned, if we have a patient elope and there's an immediate connection to the sheriff's office and Larned police, and they have a text messaging loop that once an alert goes out, it goes out to the whole community to be aware there's a patient that's, that's not accounted for with the description. So that's technology that's widely available. We, it's really important for us to be connected to local law enforcement for that kind of perimeter, not just perimeter security, but outside the, the secure perimeter within, in the hospital. So those are our things that we, we build into this project as well.
Great. So those constitute the questions that, if we had duplicates, we consolidated them. If you feel like your question wasn't, wasn't answered, please stay and ask it. Please offer it through the survey information. So that's, you're off the hook. That is, my pile is empty. So you are, that's all the questions that we have from the, the folks that are here. So we'll move into the, and, but if you have one, keep writing, we'll, we'll get it answered. We're going to move into your next opportunity to provide input. So, you know, did we even have these goofy things a few years ago? I, I'm finally done being mad that every restaurant requires this. I really want people just to hand me a menu, but I'm over it now. This is your second opportunity to, to ask questions and provide input this evening. You can do one of two things. If you'd like to use your cellphone right now and just take a picture of this and get the QR code. This is the point where we're asking you, based on the information that you heard this evening, what would you say is, which location is the best fit? I'm going to repeat myself again here. There is an opportunity for comments, questions. If you'd like to stay and write us a nice term paper, we will wait and then we will put it in the documents that go to the panel. One of the things that we would also like to say is that as this progress, this process progress, goes through the progress of all the parts and pieces, we will look to every opportunity to continue to seek community input. So if you prefer to do paper and pencil, Dawn and others are going to be walking up and down with a quick one-page survey. And then if you prefer, please take the survey for best fit with the QR code. As I mentioned at the beginning of our time together, this concludes the formal presentation portion of our evening, once you've completed the survey. And then Scott and Tanya are going to be around with the maps out front if you have specific questions that you would like to have answered. It does look like you are not off the hook. And Dawn and Jen's ready. And this is about staffing again. Will the private, will a private contractor be considered for operating the facility?
Good question. So one of the charges to the advisory panel is to review that option of, it's still being state operated, but the, the staffing provided through a contractor or some, some blended operation like that. So over the next 2024, as the panel continues to meet, I think actually in the discussion yesterday with the panel, I think that's a focus that we'll spend at least one or two of our monthly meetings reviewing, you know, what other states do, what other options are, what kinds of options like that would be available, what they would cost and advantages and disadvantages. So that's definitely a consideration before we're, while we've got some time to, to think about it before, before the building's complete.
Thanks. Okay, so please provide your input through the survey process. If you're doing it on your phone, make sure you get a thank you. That means we, it went all the way through and we got that information. We'll tabulate this information tomorrow. We'll provide it to the panel and to the county for their consideration. We'll also have everything posted in the morning on all the websites that were mentioned earlier. And these are three emails of folks that will for sure get back with you. I'm kind of just a traffic cop, not the content person, but I will make sure it gets to the, to the right person. And then also if you have specifics regarding the bidding process, Tanya's probably your best bet. And then the overall process, Scott, is probably your best bet, but any of us would be happy to help at any point in time. Can't thank you enough for giving of your time this evening. And please feel free to share any information with any of your friends and neighbors that would be interested in the topic. And also make sure you're following along with the county's process and your, your opportunity to, to make your particular needs known through your county representation. So thanks, everybody, for attending. Finish your homework and be very, very careful going home. Thank you so much for coming out tonight.